We'll now call this regular meeting of the Jacksonville City Council order. I want to welcome everyone who's come out to the meeting tonight and also those who'll be watching on G-10 television. To begin the meeting tonight, I'm going to ask Mr. Ethan Harris from Troop 937, Boy Scouts of America, out of Sneets Ferry, to come lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand, stay standing for the invocation.
Let's pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for all the blessings that you give us. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together in our community to do the business of the city. Lord, I ask that you be with each of the council members tonight as they undergo the issues that affect our citizens, Lord, and that they have the wisdom and the knowledge to make those decisions that best serve our community as we move forward. Lord, I just ask that you continue to pave the way for each of us as we go in different directions tonight. You keep us safe. You give us guidance. You walk before us, Lord, so that when we have those decisions that we have to make, we have your wisdom, your insight, your love in everything that we do. We're grateful for all of our military men and women in our community, Lord, and we just ask for their protection each and every day as they guide us and they protect us as we are our community, Lord. Thank you so much for your love, for your blessings. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ethan. If you need me to sign off on anything to take back to your troop, just see me after we get done here. Counsel, we have an agenda for tonight's meeting. I'm sure that you had the opportunity to look it over. This time I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion here? None? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Next, we have our first session, our session of public comment for this evening. I have one person that has signed up for that, and it'd be Melanie Marzette.
Hello, Melanie Marzette, 403 Alte Vista Loop. Before I get started, I just wanted to give a shout out to sanitation department. They did a really great job. I know the last snow days that we had, we skipped a week and the trash had piled up high. I saw it in my neighborhood, but they did a great job. They came by, picked everything up. And coming from a big city, you can tell the difference, so I just want to give them a shout out for that. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. Some people hear this and think about race. It's so much more. I want to challenge you to think about other things such as the handicap button on doors, wheelchair ramps, braille for the blind or sight impaired, the bilingual staff you hire for our Spanish-speaking community, making sure that parks are in proximity of every neighborhood regardless of income level, the promise program that the recreation department offers for participants with disabilities. If you are against diversity, equity, and inclusion, what part are you against? The diversity, the equity, or the inclusion? I will leave you with this fact: Black women benefit the least from diversity, equity, and inclusion. White women benefit the most from diversity, equity, and inclusion. Make sure you base what you believe on facts and not rhetoric.
Okay. Now we have the adoption of the minutes from the February 4, 2025 workshop meeting and the three consent items that are on your agenda.
Move for the adoption of the minutes and the consent items.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here, none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Go down to item number four on tonight's meeting. And this is a UDO text amendment regarding Off Street Park and Jeremy Smith. Our senior planner will be presenting this item. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I want to take this opportunity with this item and the next four behind it, Agenda Items 5, 6, 7, and 8. These are all Unified Development Ordinance text amendments. Staff analysis, we do not believe this is going to create any nonconformities, so we are covered on that part. And I believe at each of your chairs prior to the meeting for Agenda Items 6 and 7, there were revised attachments to those proposed amendments. With some discussion with the city attorney, we revised those, striking the word "negotiate" that was present in both those attachments. And staff is still on board with those changes. So with that said, I'll move forward with Agenda Item Number 4. This is a proposed Unified Development Ordinance text amendment submitted by Ty Water and Associates. This is for a proposed change to the required parking spaces for duplexes. Throughout the UDO, duplexes are grouped with single-family dwellings. Single-family dwellings require only two parking spaces, whereas duplexes require a parking space per unit and then an additional space per bedroom. So if you have a two- or three-bedroom duplex, times two, that's a lot of parking on a small lot. So with that in mind, Ty Water submitted a request to revise that parking to make it consistent with single-family. Duplexes, in essence, are attached to single-family. They're still treated single-family throughout the UDO. Staff and the planning board are both recommending approval of this. And so with that said, we are recommending that city council approve this change to the Unified Development Ordinance for duplex parking to be only two spaces per each unit. It is consistent with the CAMA Plan Policy 6.9 in the Attachment A with this agenda item. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Jason Houston from Ty Water and Associates is in attendance to answer any questions as well.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Smith or Mr. Houston?
I have a question for Mr. Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
For these duplexes, is where the parking is going to be, like, behind one another?
So...
Or will it have, like, an attached garage that one car can get in the garage and then another car will be able to be behind it?
So the order, the UDO, just currently, and even with this change, does not require a specific arrangement to the parking. Duplex parking can be treated just like single-family. You just have a driveway and that's your parking spaces.
Got you.
Currently, right now, the Unified Development Ordinance doesn't allow a garage to be a space, so you would have a, in this case, if this is approved, you'd have a driveway that large enough to accommodate two vehicles.
Other questions? Might as well stay there.
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'll recess the regular meeting and open up a public hearing that's required on this matter. Anyone wishing to speak to these parking, loading, and circulation standards on the UDO, please indicate by raising your hand. CNN 01, council, we'll close the public hearing. Reconvene the regular council meeting, and council, you're being asked to consider the Unified Development Ordinance Amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the UDO text amendment as it's consistent with the CAMA use plan, is reasonable, and is also in the public interest.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here, none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All opposed. Okay. Next, we got item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda Item 5 is another Unified Development Ordinance text amendment. This is regarding Article 5, Section 5.8, Small Nonresidential Design Standards. This is a staff-recommended and submitted amendment. The primary purpose of this amendment is to remove the current standard that areas between 3 and 8 feet above the walking grade level of any commercial use has to remain clear. We've found that this can present some difficulties when trying to do signage, and so we are recommending language that would strike that requirement and then put some placement on signage within windows and tinting clarification. We think this will allow more flexibility in our sign code and hopefully give our business owners more flexibility in what they're doing. The planning board reviewed this proposed text amendment at their November 12, 2024 meeting, and they, along with staff, are recommending this change to the Unified Development Ordinance with being consistent with adopted CAMA Plan Policy 38.2, and that the amendment is consistent or is reasonable in the public interest. Again, this is staff-initiated, and I'll be happy to answer any question that the board may have.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Are we doing away with the required glazing for the building facade facing A Street?
No, sir. Glazing will still be there. This is just removing that 3 to 8 feet of keeping it clear and open, but the glazing requirement will still be there. Right now, for small nonresidential, it's 15%. That's glass, doors, and windows. Large nonresidential, that's anything over 40,000 square feet, is only 12%.
We had a, I don't remember how many years ago it was, maybe five, six years ago, we had an issue where we did have a building, a strip shopping center being built. It was on the corner, it was facing Brenmore Road, but it was also siding Center Street, I think that is, that goes through there. And I remember getting a waiver, helping the builder get a waiver. It just didn't seem to fit that application. I don't remember all the particulars at this point, but...
Yeah, I do not recall that, but yes, if you have a corner lot, you have two street-facing facades, glazing is triggered on both sides. We haven't really run into that issue with the commercial uses, and again, the glazing requirement only applies to commercial uses.
Right.
So your industrial and office, it wouldn't impact.
This was, this was a, so you're saying it's just corridor commercial?
Commercial use. Is that your commercial use category? That's your retail, wholesale variety of...
But not O and I necessarily?
No, no. Most uses in the O and I and industrial are specific to those use categories, and glazing does not currently apply to those.
That might have been an O and I situation.
Perhaps.
I don't remember the particulars now.
Got you.
Might have been more than five, six years ago. It might have been 10 years ago, too.
Mayor, I wanted to add, too, that the planning team has talked to some of our sign companies about this recommendation. You know, that's part of that process. They've done a really good job of having the dialogue with those companies, and even though it's recommended by staff, it's coming through the dialogue that we've had to try and help those, not just those businesses, but help their business partners be able to do some of the things they want to do.
Thank you. Any other questions? Might as well stay there.
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'll recess the regular meeting, open up a public hearing on this matter. Anyone wishing to speak to this particular item, indicate by raising your hand. No hands. We'll close the public hearing. Reconvene the regular council meeting. You're being asked, counsel, to approve the Unified Development Ordinance text amendment.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Jeremy another question?
Please do.
Do we require a minimum glazing for a, for commercial use?
Yes, that is the 15%. That's the doors and windows, the glass.
So 15%, but if they're fronting, if they're on a corner, they would have to have 15 and 15?
Yes, sir. Currently, the way it's, the ordinance is written, and it's very specific, it says any street-facing facade.
And the reason why, that could cause an issue if it's sitting on a side. You know, here's the storefront side where the parking is. The road may do nothing except go by, and was this, did we approve this for appearances, aesthetics?
Yes, the design criteria are, I think, wholeheartedly an aesthetics deal, and a lot of times, we will have a building or a project come in, and they're like, well, we don't have windows on this side because that's where our kitchen is or our storage. And so we've allowed some flexibility of putting faux windows. I would draw your attention to Academy Sports or Burlington Coat Factory. The windows they have down their side are fake windows. They look like windows to give that appearance, but if you were to pull them off, it would be brick wall right behind them.
Is that a public safety issue at times?
We have not been made aware because it's, like I said, it only currently applies for commercial uses. You could have a doctor's office in the corridor commercial, and they're allowed to completely block out their windows. But this is, we did put this out there, and we have not received any feedback from the chief.
You've never, you've not had any pushback from any developers regarding the, alongside the side street?
There's always that discussion. I think glazing requirements as a whole in municipalities, not just across North Carolina, is becoming standard with zoning ordinances. Most of the designs, I'd say in the last five or six years, our UDO was adopted in 2014, the elevations already come in and they've already taken it into account. Now, I'm not saying it's not without its hardship, especially when you get to your smaller buildings, but we haven't had a site yet to say, look, we just want to amend the, can we propose an amendment to the ordinance because we just cannot do this or try to seek some kind of variance.
Could I ask Ryan, Mr. King, a question? You've got a better memory than I do. What, do you remember, it was Morton Construction, it was Brenmore Road?
I remember the building, but I do not remember the issue at hand.
It had to do with the, the glass, the glazing on the side facing Center Street. The front of their building was fronting Brenmore Road there.
I know the building. I just don't remember any of the details, but I think that Jeremy's given some really good examples of, you know, the buildings that have been constructed since council adopted Unified Development Ordinance. In my opinion, look a lot better than they did in the past, and this will just help with, Chick-fil-A is another recent example where, when you pull up the drive-thru immediately to your left, that's where the kitchen is, but it looks like a glass wall there because they needed to do that to meet the criteria. So to me, it really boils down to the aesthetic quality of what we have in built-in city. And it's just that street-facing facade. Now, if we were asking for it on the other facades, we probably would have gotten some kickback before now, but it's just those street-facing facades.
I'm thinking like places like Britishack and Jersey Mike's, you know, where they have streets based on all angles. They have west from the front, the side, plus the back, you know? There's glazing back there, too. Do they not have any issues with that?
So that's a good example of one where they had to add the glazing to the rear facade, the Britishack example, but because that's street-facing, that glazing component kicks in.
Why is it not worth making the developers pay for that when they have so much other stuff on the back? You have meters, ladders. I mean, it's not like a little bit of glass is going to make that big of a difference, but it's adding cost to the bill of the build.
It's certainly something that, you know, somebody, that we could bring back forward to you. This is just really, this has been more about complications with applying for sign permits. It's an additional calculation the sign companies have to do. In the event that it's the business owner trying to do it themselves, it's just additional work. They've got to go out there and come up with, what is 12 or 15% of my building? So this eliminates that component as long as, you know, it's going to eliminate that from being an issue. There's still a situation where they still have to do certain things, but with this 3 to 8 feet, it's going to help. Like Ms. Ray said, we've talked with sign companies, it's going to improve their lives in terms of making sign applications. It's going to improve our lives because of the way that we have to calculate and check their calculations. If that's something that mayor and council wants us to consider, we certainly can bring that forward for discussion. I would contend that maybe there's something else as far as dressing up the back of the building, but the Britishack example, I mean, that's still a visible facade, and I understand that there's certain things with roof access and electric meters. I mean, it's still going to look a certain way, but, you know, we've recently bet with a developer for the corner of Henderson Drive and Western Boulevard. That building's going to be 15 feet off Henderson Drive. It's going to be quite the facade, and not having glass on that side is not going to look as aesthetically pleasing as if they didn't have the glass.
Yeah.
So, but I mean, if there's something, this is really simple. We're just trying to strike the 3 to 8 foot visually permeable. If there's something else the mayor and council wants us to bring back, we certainly can put that on a workshop item for discussion. We can look at some things and bring back to you.
I think this is a good tweak. You know, as any, as you know, any part of that UDO is open for tweaks down the road as we find situations that don't seem to fit very well, but I'm okay with it.
One other thing is, you had asked a question about the public safety. So this is something else that kind of goes into our thought process. So they require, we require glass. Well, the business owner, all they have to do is pull the curtain down behind it. We don't have anything that says you can't pull a curtain down, but yet we have this standard that says, well, hey, you can't do signage on the outside if it's within 3 to 8 feet. So it's still not going to be perfect, but this is going to be a good improvement for, I think, everybody involved. Thank you.
Right. With that, counsel, we're going to recess the regular meeting, open up a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone wishes to speak to the UDO amendment, text amendment regarding glazing CNN 01, we'll close the public hearing. Reconvene the council meeting. Council, you're being asked to approve the text amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the proposed amendment as it's consistent with the CAMA Plan and it is revising in order to make our regulations responsive to innovative development and current conditions. It's reasonable and in the public interest.
Second.
Right.
Any question? Any comments? With that said, we will take a vote on that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. That takes us down to Jeremy's next item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda Item Number 6 is a proposed Unified Development Ordinance text amendment to Article 5 Development Standards Subsection 5.1, Off Street Parking. This specifically relates to primary drive aisles. Excuse me, one second. Primary drive aisles were introduced when we adopted the Unified Development Ordinance in 2014. We've only had to use it one time before, and that was with Academy Sports. The primary drive aisle is a design element when you have large development, large parking lots. It proposes to add a, just as it sounds, a drive aisle down the center of the parking lot perpendicular, or thank you very much, or parallel to the prime principal building to break it up to provide access, and it's very rigid in its current stance. So Ty Water and Associates has submitted a text amendment that would grant the TRC, working with the developer during plan review, to find perhaps a more logical placement, something that works for them and meets our standards and our intent for those large sites. Again, the Academy Sports is the only one we've had to apply that to, but when you look at some of our existing sites like New Market Square, Jacksonville Mall, or the large parking facility with Target, if they were ever needing to redevelop, this would grant TRC that ability to work with the developer for a more proper placement of this design element. With all that being said, the planning board and staff is recommending approval of this text amendment, granting the TRC the flexibility to work with the developer to determine the best location of a primary drive aisle, that this amendment is consistent with adopted CAMA Plan Policy 38.2, and is reasonable and within the public interest. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, as well as representatives from Ty Water and Associates.
Questions of Jeremy, counsel.
Mr. Mayor, is, does the developer get a chance to negotiate with the TRC if they disagree with the location of the, that drive aisle?
So yes, one of the items, this is one of the revised attachments. We actually had the term "negotiate."
Okay.
And working with city attorney, that term could lean itself, based on some case law, negotiate that TRC may be granting a variance of standards and whatnot. So coming to an agreement based on standards was the more appropriate term. But yes, we would work with the developer on a location, and if there was a, as with any site plan or plan review, if TRC ultimately cannot, you know, approves a site plan or denies a site plan, the developer always has that avenue to go through the appeal process.
The reason why I ask, because determination of the best location is subjective.
Correct.
So then, you know, so certainly open to somebody's opinion.
But yes, we would work with the developer as they submit.
Okay. Any other questions? With that, I'll recess the regular council meeting, open up a public hearing on this matter. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please indicate by raising your hand. CNN 01, we'll close the public hearing and reconvene the council meeting. Council, you're being asked to approve the UDO amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the UDO text amendment as it is consistent with the adopted CAMA Plan and reasonable and is in the public interest.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here, none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That takes us to item number seven. And Jeremy's still up.
Thank you. Agenda Item 7, another Unified Development Text Ordinance Amendment. This amendment was submitted by Mr. Eddie Rose, and this is regards to Article 4 Use Standards, Use Specific Standards, and more specifically, self-stored facilities. Practical application of our current self-stored facility use standards has proven difficult with facilities that predate the UDO. If you have a property that suffers casualty damage, currently the way the ordinance is written, if they have to rebuild, that building would have to now meet today's use-specific standards and would look drastically different than what they may have built several years ago. Now, if you have a facility that has multiple buildings, it would probably look worse to have one standing out among the other five or so, or more they have on site. So working with staff, Mr. Rose has submitted a text amendment that would grant the city manager or their designated through plan review for sites that have suffered, have multiple buildings, that have buildings damaged less than their full 50% of their inventory, then we would have that ability to deviate from those use-specific standards, and that's screening of garage bay doors, placement on the site, facade design, materials, and whatnot. Staff is in support of this because this may not be the only time that this kind of comes up. We may deal with other similar types of developments. When you have apartment complexes, we currently have design elements for multifamily, so we may come forward with amendments in regards to those standards. But we were, submitted this amendment by Mr. Rose. We took it to the planning board, and they, along with staff, are recommending approval that this amendment is consistent with CAMA Plan Policy 38.2, and that it is reasonable and in the public interest, and we are recommending approval, and I will be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions of Jeremy.
I have a question, more of a comment. I think it's really good that in cases like this where nonconformities, there's a lot of nonconformities and things like this, where it just would not make practical or financial sense, it's good to allow that flexibility.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Right. With that, we'll recess the regular meeting and open up a public hearing on this matter. Anyone wishing to speak to this particular top item, please indicate by raising your hand. CNN 01, we'll close the public hearing. Reconvene the council meeting, and council, you're being asked to approve or adopt the Unified Development Ordinance Amendment.
Mayor Phillips, I made the motion that council approve the UDO text amendment, which is consistent with the CAMA Plan, and it is reasonable and within the public interest.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here, none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That brings us to item number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One final Unified Development Tax Ordinance Amendment tonight. This is specifically for the residential multifamily high-density zoning district, and this relates to town home lots. When the... When the Unified Development Ordinance was adopted in 2014, it had a larger town home lot size requirement that doesn't necessarily line up with industry standard, and it basically created several non-conformities of a lot of our town home lots existing at the time. And so Tybwater and Associates, along with staff, has identified this and is recommending to reduce the, or not reduce, but eliminate the lot width requirement for town home lots in the RMF HD zoning district. That way, we would allow several of our existing town home facilities and/or developments would now comply, and in the future, we'd be able to meet that industry standard of, typically, we were seeing 15, 18 feet wide, 20-foot wide town home lots. We took this to the planning board in November of last year, and they would, along with staff, have recommended approval of this text amendment, being consistent with CAMA Policy 6.9, and that it is reasonable and in the public interest. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Questions, council.
So are you saying that townhomes were on individual lots? Is that how?
So townhomes, yes. So that is, so with multifamily, you generally have two types. You've got your townhomes, you've got apartments. Apartments are, you know, all in one lot.
Townhomes have.
They're all, they're on their own individual lot, they're a building.
As opposed to a condo.
Correct. Your building is your lot, whereas a townhome may have a backyard and a front yard. And typically, those lots are 15, 18, maybe 20 feet wide, whereas I believe our ordinance is currently, 20 feet is the standard, 25 is the requirement now. And that has, we've got a number of townhome developments in, and that creates some issues. And this would make, we believe, more consistent. We've looked at other ordinances across the state, Fayetteville, I believe the city Greenville, and this would be consistent with what they do.
Again, touching on non-conformities and also making.
Correcting several.
Some common sense allowance for density in the type of building.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? That will recess the regular meeting, open up the required public hearing on this matter. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please indicate by raising your hand. CNNO one, I'll close the public hearing, reconvene the regular council meeting, council being asked to approve the UDO amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the amendment as presented, as it's consistent with CAMA and Policy 6.9, and is very sensible.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion here? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Brings us to our first item under non-consent, and this is the Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority Appointment. Anthony, will you be able to, you present?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. The request before you is to consider filling a vacancy in the Tourism Development Authority Board of Directors. This vacancy was created by the departure of Mr. Chris Davis, who had been with us for many years. I don't know the exact number, but Chris was able to secure his dream job with the Hilton Corporation and unfortunately had to move to Dallas. But he's doing well, and we've got a vacancy to consider filling. So as you're probably aware, the council appoints all of the members of the TDA, the directors, as well as the chairman. The current chairman is Mr. Randy Thomas, who of course is a former council member. There are six total members to include the chairman, which is pretty unusual, being an even number, but that's what's required according to general statute. Underneath that requirement, we must have two participants who are associated with collecting the occupancy tax. So they're either hoteliers or Airbnb owners, things of that nature. And then we also are required to have three members who are involved in promoting tourism for Jacksonville. That's a pretty broad definition, and throughout the state, it's commonly held that if you are a hotelier, particularly at a sales manager or a general manager level, you can actually fulfill both of those requirements, because as a sales manager or general manager, you are promoting as well as collecting the tax. I mentioned that Mr. Davis is the reason for our vacancy. He was formerly employed with Hampton Inn and Suites, and then later Marriott, and so to fill his position, we must reappoint another hotelier, or I should say, somebody who collects the tax. So speaking with Mr. Davis, as well as the other hotelier who's on our Board of Directors, Mr. Rick Young, they both recommended Mrs. Jay Smith to fill the vacancy. She's currently the general manager of the Fairfield at Marriott, and she's been in eastern North Carolina for 13 years. Of course, has ties to the Marine Corps. Like many of our local residents, her husband is a retired Marine. First, she was in Havelock and then in Atlantic Beach, but for the past eight years, she's worked in Jacksonville. And of course, call, doesn't necessarily call Jacksonville home, but she calls it her home, if that makes sense. She's an active member of the Chamber of Commerce on both the diversity, what do we call it? I knew I was going to mess this up.
Diversity Council.
The Business Diversity Council, as well as the Military Affairs Committee. And so if you spend any time with those groups, I'm sure that you've met her before. You know, just anecdotally, I've spent a good amount of time with her since joining the TDA business. She's a wonderful lady, and she's very excited about this opportunity, very energetic, and I'll tell you that finding hoteliers that are willing to take on this role is challenging, because if you know anything about that business, they work lots and lots and lots and lots of hours. So taking on this additional role is of course, you know, another responsibility, but she is very excited and willing to serve at the will of the council. So that being said, the recommendation is that the council consider supporting Jay Smith for this position, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Anybody want to make a motion here to appoint Jay Smith as the occupant, on the Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority?
Sure, I will. I'll make a motion that we appoint Mrs. Jay Smith to the Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion here? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we're going to talk about the lease for the.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, while it may not feel like it, baseball season is actually just around the corner, and so we wanted to prepare and get ready for our fabulous season coming up for year 2025 and 2026. So before you tonight, I do have an extension on the lease agreement with the Patino's Jacksonville Baseball. I think everybody is in agreement that we had a great initial year. The partnership with the Patino's has been fantastic. They've brought a lot to the community, and I think everybody's been pleased with activities with the Ospreys. They had 24 scheduled home games on Jacksonville Jack Emme at Ball Field, and they had a great lineup of promotions and themes and just activities all around. So again, it was a great year. What we wanted to do at the end of the year was to review the lease. It being a new activity for us, we felt like there were some areas that we just needed to hone in on. So what we've done is we've extended, or what we'd like to do is extend that lease another two years that was written in the original. But we really wanted to discuss and add on to that and discuss some areas that maybe we didn't put in there in the first one. So some of those things were a field rental. We didn't also want to exclude any of the partnership that we work with them, the audio equipment, the scoreboard equipment. We work together so that they can have joint use of that, that we might not have put in the original. And then we also wanted to address the concessions, alcohol sales and some of the other concessions that they have going on. So all of that's been incorporated moving forward. If it works with your consent, then we'll be able to just extend that out for the next two years and it's incorporated. So we shouldn't be before you next year unless we have any other concerns. But we're very excited. They have, we've met with them yesterday. We have some great things on the horizon. We're always trying to continually improve that ball field, so we have some nice new things with the support of the TDA, thank you Anthony, and board members. We do have a new scoreboard coming, and that will be installed before the season starts. We also have some renovated dugouts. That was some of the feedback we got back from the team and the, and the coaches and the, and the players, that they, they liked a different layout for those dugouts, so we're going to be able to incorporate that this season as well. As well as, it might seem small, but water excess on the field, as we all know, it gets hot, and this will allow those folks and those coaches to address some issues on the field during play or right before play. So we've made those improvements already, thanks to Michael's crews. But the great news that you're going to hear, and they gave us permission to announce it, that you'll see some more promotions, is they did put a bid in for their All-Star Game and their Home Run Derby. June 28th, we'll be hosting and helping them do a really great day of family fun activities as well as an All-Star Game. So they're really excited to bring in players from all the different leagues and all the different teams from all over the state, so we'll be happy to host them on Jack Emme at Ball Field. But in general, we're going to show our support for our community, that we welcome the baseball and the baseball community and all those players. So great, great news for us, and you'll see a lot more coming from them on that front, but we're just really excited to be able to support them. So it's going to be a great season. It starts in May, and they have 19 home games, and they've given us a great lineup of activities, and we're going to continue to do what we can and provide this great activity for the community. So any questions?
Yeah, how are we doing on the seating capacity?
The seating capacity, we've looked at some options. I did talk with them yesterday about, yesterday. We've looked at adding some. Right now, we're not able to do that this season, but we're also talking about some additional smaller bleachers. Yes, sir. And we've also changed their perimeter and their fencing, so they're going to work also with their concession, so they're going to make more space also for that to allow for people to have some more seating and better viewship. The other thing we're also going to do is some sound and some audio. So we have sound advice coming to give us a, take a look at adding some speakers to some of those outside poles, so that we know that people that are sitting out there can hear better and be able to enjoy the game from all areas of the ballpark.
Could they rent bleachers if they need to?
They could.
At their expense, I guess.
They could. We have some, you know, footprint challenges with the slope on one side, but we certainly could, and then we're going to look at some of our bleachers and bringing some more over. Mm-hmm.
I know you had a lot of people sitting on the lawn in their own lawn chairs. I mean, that works, but like you say, the elevation.
The elevation, we have some, you know, some slope on that, but, you know, I think overall, for most of the games of the season, I think it worked fairly well with the number of attendance. So I think we're just going to try and work with what, what we can move in and reposition some of those activities that they have as best as we can, and we'll continue to review and tweak and add additions as we can.
I remember on that first night, the exhibition game that they played, they had over 1,200 people.
It was a great day.
Show up for the ballgame, and a lot of them were stationed in centerfield area, the outfield area, but that's no longer feasible since they do a lot of their advertising signs there.
They do. They have a lot of, they have a great, some great, great community sponsorship for sure, so they have a lot of the.
It is great that a lot of people have signed on to support businesses in our community.
Yes, sir. It was a beautiful night. There's a beautiful picture of the sunset right there. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Susan.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, have you had the time to, chance to review that lease, if we entertain a motion to allow the city manager to execute the lease?
So I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have the FY '25 Second Quarter Financial and Investment Reports. Josh is going to provide that information to us.
Thank you, Mayor. We sent out this information on the quarterly financial and investment reports last week. Give you a time to look over that. We like to keep the information in front of council so that you're able to monitor how the funds are doing, both on the revenues and the expenditures. As always, I would remind you that the expenditures are going to look heavy for the first half of the year, because we have a lot of upfront costs that we do in the first three months of the fiscal year. However, you'll see the sales tax, those are going to report quarterly, so those numbers are going to come in later, but we like to keep that, the financial information highlighted for you. You'll see any of the numbers that are typically outside of what that range is are typically highlighted in a different color, again, showing you a high or a low projection for the time, one example being sales tax, but you only have the first quarter, you don't have the second quarter report. So we give you the FY '24 year-to-date and the FY '25, so you can compare, and then if you, if you go to the other side, you're watching each of those funds, and those funds operate as business accounts. So we're consistently monitoring revenues and expenditures to make sure that where we're at, especially as we're coming into our fiscal year FY '26 planning process. So a lot of these items, we're going to be, bring back to council. You're going to use this as a baseline with the audit from last year and the numbers that we give you throughout the year, so that we can look at those items. And then when we're considering any type of rate structure and a fee schedule, we'll use this information to come back to council. So that's the, that's what I have on the financial report. Then if you look over to the quarterly report for the investments, you're going to see a lot of those interest rates have changed over the last year. Mr. Wardens pointed out a couple of those numbers. Those have been longer-term CDs. Now, as those have, have turned over, you're going to see the interest rates mostly in the four range, the lowest one being the 3.25, and that's a 32-month, but the others fluctuate. And then on the matured investments, that refers back to some of that fluctuation that we've seen historically in those, those numbers, that we see some positive gains for this year. Gladly answer any questions on the financial documents.
Any questions, council?
I know revenue always lags behind the first six months. Anything, any flags of any, any sort at this point?
No, sir, and I think that's the point where we consistently need to watch the sales tax now, because we're seeing a lot nationally where we had some spikes in sales tax, especially coming out of COVID, and the state of North Carolina had seen some significant spikes in sales tax. I think what we're seeing is a leveling out, but our projections are still very conservative, and so we won't see as much of those spikes. What we see with our budgeting plan, that we've seen for multiple years in Jacksonville, is we'll see an increase at the end of the year, which will show us a surplus. So on the budgeting side, I feel very confident that our projections are right in line, but I would caution us that moving forward, even though we are a hub, where we're seeing the sales tax get to that $20, $21 million annually, that could be a mark where we're at for a longer period of time. We could see minimal growth over the year-to-year growth that, that we may not have seen in other times. So all the numbers, what we're reviewing now, look to be within the projections and where we need to be.
Just another general comment, we're making more off eggs than we used to.
Eight dollars for 18.
We'll move on to your next one there.
Thanks, sir. Mayor, the other report that we like to send out early is the Human Resources Report. This report, we continue to, to adjust the report so that we can present information to council. Council has made a top priority to recruit and retain the best employees, and so this is a way for staff to provide this update to council, so that you can see progress and then challenges that we have. On that first page, you're going to see consistent information that shows calendar year '22, '23, and '24. We're comparing those years so that you have a, you have a baseline to look at how our numbers are comparing. You'll see in the far right column, four-time employees from '23 and '24 are about the same. There's a minimal percent change in those numbers, and those are attrition. So however we look at it, this year, we're looking at 15.7% of attrition of people coming in and out of the organization, which we see that is better. You know, the goal would be to keep people as long as possible, and then those that retire, we'd like to see that be the only reason. But in our market, as we always see, we have people that are not only moving out of our community, they're moving out of our state, going to other states, and a lot of those people are military spouses or family members. The second part of that is. The second part of that is, we still see our number of military personnel being around 24% of overall full-time staff. So, we see a great asset of the Marine Corps providing us with talent that fill up some of those 622 full-time positions that council has provided. At the bottom of that first page, you'll see information that shows the number of applications that we receive. We use that as a market indicator, showing that there's a desire to work for our organization, and that's how we use that. You can look at it in a couple of different ways. You can see it as we have positions open, therefore, we have more applications. But what we see it as is an organization that is attracting applicants and that we're expanding our recruitment efforts. I think that's a valuable part of what we're looking at over time. The last part I'll draw attention to on this report, Mayor, is the North Carolina League of Municipalities Market Survey Analysis. That is our market. That's our defined market. We use a population of 25,000 to 99,000, and we compare within that range. It's been adopted by the council, and you challenge us to review that information every single year. One of the things that we're working on right now in between the fiscal year, that's already been approved by council, is to move our pay plan up so that the entry-level positions are now higher. At one point, Mr. Warden had talked to us about the national drive is to get all starting positions to at least have a minimum wage of $15 per hour. Well, we're at that threshold now, so we're wanting to make some changes within the pay plan and the budget that's already been approved by council to move those positions up as close as we can have them to that mark. That's not a magic number. It's a trend that we're seeing nationally. It's a push because we want to raise salaries. We also want to focus on that mid-level employee. You'll recall at our longevity ceremony, we had a number of people that were making the five-year mark. You know, the five-year mark's a place where we want to retain those people for the 10 years, for the 15 years, if we're able to keep them for that period of time. So, we want to focus in those areas, not just on entry-level salaries and benefits, but on that point where they're going to be a long-term member of our team. So, we're going to move that pay plan so that we can raise the number. Our new starting salary would be about $1,475 for that entry-level position in our pay plan, which I believe is plus or minus a grade four, somewhere into that spectrum. But our challenge is using our revenues to take care of our employees as a number of priority, as the council said, for at least the last three years and not more. I'd answer any questions on those or that strategy, Mayor?
Questions, council?
Not a question, just a comment. There's always going to be variations in the market, but I think that pay scale adjustment might help us level out some of the attrition. Never hurts.
That's true.
Thank you, sir.
All right, with that.
Move we accept the reports, both of them, items 11 and 12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That brings us to our reports during the night. I'll start with you, Mr. Sosa.
No reports. Let's hope the snow stays away.
Mayor Potem Bitter?
No report this evening.
Dr. Washington?
No report.
Ms. Edwards? Mr. Warden?
I'm going to go no report. I had a smart comment, but I'm going to save it.
Yeah, save it for a better time, yeah. Seize the, seize an opportunity this morning. All I have is, I would like to recognize Ms. Kathleen Horn Marshall. Most of you probably don't know who she is, but yesterday, she celebrated her 100th birthday. And she's a longtime citizen of the city of Jacksonville. Ms. Marshall was born in Cedar Fork in the Back Swamp Community on February 18th, 1925, and she attended Greensboro, Greensboro's Women's College, which is now known as University of North Carolina at Greensboro. She came home and worked in the Ozzo County Auditor's Office, where she met Thomas Marshall, who was the Ozzo County Tax Collector, who later on went on to be the Ozzo County Sheriff for 28 years. Mr. and Ms. Marshall were married 48 years and have one son, John Marshall. Ms. Marshall served on the Social Services Board and was a precinct worker at the Board of Elections. And with that, I wish, I would like to wish her a very happy 100th birthday in honor of her contributions to our community, and hope you will join me in celebrating and recognizing her outstanding longevity of life.
Mayor, I didn't think Raz was going to give us a comment, since he's not talking a lot today, so I just went ahead and bypassed that. Before I share the One City Moment, Mayor, I do want to add the comment about the items that Jeremy Smith brought to council tonight. These are all great partner projects that we're working on. Most of those items come from our business leaders. Tidewater consistently steps up to bring items to us, and we work really well with Tidewater when we sit down at the drawing table to try and figure out how do we amend our UDO. I think that's a value add, so I really appreciate the community bringing items in and the council reviewing the items so that we can make sure that our policies and our ordinances are strong and that they are pro-business in a community where we're trying to make things happen. So, I just get to add that section, Mayor. Not the One City Moment, but it just shows how we work together in our city to make positive things happen. We do have one item for you tonight, Mayor, the Community Spring Refresh. What a great event. The Neighborhood Improvement Services has brought this event to us. LaShawn Harston, you know, sent the information to us. There's so many partners you see in these pictures that come together to make special things happen. In this spring event, Neighborhood Improvement Services led a program to assist three homeowners in cleanup. You're going to see members of Skyline Realty and New Beginning Christian Center here, but you'll also see lawn mowing, tree and bush trimming, power washing, leaf blowing, and removal of trash and debris. The amazing part of that is, on a Saturday, members of the community come together to help out neighbors. That's the value of everything that we do. It is truly the center of our One City Initiative. Neighbors helping neighbors, doesn't matter where they're at, where they live, or what they need. There's a lot of good service right here, and multiple people saying, "We want to help each other, make a positive impact on the community." From the start to the finish, the program is excellent, and the product is even better. I encourage you, if you want to get outside and you want to have a positive impact, you don't have to go through NIS. You can do that with any neighbor down the road, as long as they want you on their property. But if you prefer to go through a formalized system, you can contact LaShawn or Tracy and make that contact and join a team to make positive impact on anybody's property in our community. As long as we have people that are in need, then we're going to have staff that are going to step up. And I tell you, for Tracy's team, for Pamela and for LaShawn, what a great leadership opportunity to make positive things happen for those three people, but that's what they do year-round. So, when you're looking for what our departments do, just like Melanie said, on the sanitation side, our people are constantly looking for ways to do things better and more efficiently and more effectively. This is a great example. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, George. Thank you. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.